This is the Georgetown Zoning Board of Appeals Business Meeting for Tuesday, June the 4th, 2019. For new business, we initially had a resident to come in and talk to us about potentially being an associate member. What's his name again? Mr. McNulty?
Yes, Dennis McNulty.
Dennis McNulty, but he wasn't able to come.
He told me yesterday he wasn't able to come, so I put him on for July 9.
Okay. First thing, business July 9.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
You want to walk us through finance?
Yes.
Patty? Nice to have you back, by the way. On the record, we missed you.
Still no laptop, but I'll be writing. Get past the new members stuff. Finance is actually just a postage meter. You can see we deposited that $250. And then the hearing for July 9, 13 Parish, a butters and applicant. And then the revolving update with that deposit and the last revolving hours. That's about it for finance. And then the minutes of May 7.
We have a motion to approve.
So I think I'm listed as a voting member in the top, and I wasn't a voting member.
Hold on. Sorry, I might.
At least I thought I read it online. Maybe I misread it.
No, you were there.
I was present, but then I felt badly that I spoke up because I wasn't voting after all. But in the very top, you know, it says Sharon Freeman voting. I think it should say non-voting.
I'm looking at East, I'm looking at Mara. I'm looking at Mara. Mara's Carlton Drive.
Oh, sorry.
You're looking at that one?
I'm looking at the wrong.
No, she's, you're right.
The Mallett.
That's the one she's talking about.
Yeah.
She was not a voting member on that.
Yeah, it's just in the header, as I recall. It just says Sharon Freeman associate. Yeah, so just put it on.
So you can just approve the minutes as amended.
Okay.
Delete, I'll delete the word "voting" from page one of nine.
Do I have a motion to approve business and hearing minutes? Do I have to do them separately? Does it make separate?
Not now, because Gina's not here.
Okay, I have to wait?
No, you can do them together.
And I do have a motion to approve business and hearing minutes of May 7, 2019, business or hearing minutes as amended.
So moved.
I got too many pieces of paper.
Any discussion?
No.
Who's in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
It's from the chief.
Yeah, and we have Dave's letter too, right? There it is.
And then we have a memo from Chief Pedmore. This is just informational. It's about the parking on the outside of 51 West Main Street, said it was antiques. And he has pictures just showing that there might be an issue. But he said to me that, well, he's going to see the selectmen about that because it's on-street parking.
Yeah, why would, just from my own information, why would he direct that to the zoning board? Because we...
We had the hearing, so he's just kind of letting, you know...
Yeah, this would be planning, right?
I think so.
Yeah, planning will do parking, but as far as I think, on-street parking, the selectmen have something to say about spots and may even hit highway. Put Peter in there.
Doesn't look like they've done anything to me.
That was just, he just said, "That's just a copy for their information." And then the letter of resignation from David Twist. The distribution of 13 Parish, which is under your agendas for the next meeting. And that's all. Well, and the other thing is... It's in the envelope.
Oh, gotcha.
And it has July 9. That's all.
Who can't make it August 6?
Jeff.
I'm not sure.
And anybody else?
And Gina.
That's a tough month.
I have two. I have Jeff, Gina.
I'll be here. I got no idea.
I don't know. I don't know, was it last August and the August before? We didn't end up having, we didn't end up having a plan.
Oh, I thought it was because we didn't have business.
I'll be here.
Just to confirm, July is on the 9th, correct?
Yes, we moved that because of the 4th. I brought the calendar here. And then August 6, there's only three weeks before, after, from August 6 to September, 1, 2, 3. There's actually four, but Labor Day kind of doesn't count, so that's going to be tight with legal ads.
And September is what, the 10th?
We moved that to the 10th because Labor Day might have been a problem for some people. So then there's, then we moved October to the 8th. It's on the bottom of your agenda. I put all the way through October 8. That only leaves three weeks between the November hearing, so hopefully nothing will come in.
August was the 6th or the 13th?
That's a joke. I was kidding.
Six.
Was the 6th?
Yeah.
I'm just going for that week. I can be around on the 13th if it was the 13th. We tended to go to the second Tuesday to get them spaced, I think, so it's up to everybody. I mean, the absence, or you can cancel it, or...
I won't be here.
We're so inclined, you can do it on the...
I won't be here that weekend.
On the 13th.
On the 13th, but I'm not on the board, so...
Wow, no, it's fine. Just FYI.
I wasn't supposed to be here today.
Let me see if I'm here.
I'm supposed to be on vacation.
Yeah, sure.
Paul's not going.
It's on. It's on vacation for me.
Is Gina, is everybody else around?
So I'll be traveling on the, I'll be in Florida on the 13th.
I don't think Gina's, Gina's just, Gina's not. But I didn't know if he was...
I won't be here the 13th. I'll be here the 6th.
Okay.
I would recommend you just hold the 6th, then if you can't get a call later, then you deal with it then.
You might have.
Gina.
Gina, 5. We need 4?
You might have another alternate minute.
Oh, true. Yeah.
Well, if he comes, if he's not coming to another July business meeting, you talk to him July 9, and then you have to wait till the selectman appoint him, and then he gets his papers and has to be sworn in, just like you guys got to do.
How often do they meet? How often do the selectmen meet?
Every other Monday.
Well, usually in the summer, they cut it down, so it just depends when he gets, when and if he gets appointed and when he gets sworn in.
Is it really required that he attend a meeting?
We need people.
I had to go through three days, three days of selectman testimony.
He went through...
No, I'm just kidding.
This seems absurd.
No.
You're so desperate.
So I went, you speak to the chairman, and I went, I talked to Jeff, and then I went to the following selectman meeting a week later, and I came up and they asked me a couple of questions, and they said, "Well, you know, we hereby appoint you..."
It seems like a lot of...
And the town clerk has to...
Well, it's because in the past...
Yeah, but every citizen has a right to be on a board.
Pass them out like cards.
There's procedural stuff. Yeah, it's an appointed position.
It seems like a lot of work when we really need members, just saying.
Must have been desperate if I didn't have anybody.
I didn't mean either. I was just like, here I am.
Back in 1998, they just had a list and they just filled them out.
Yeah.
If you lived here, you'd be all right.
Okay, yeah. So I think we're all set. Yeah.
Something were to come up, and you need to continue, I can always do what you did, which is, I can continue something, and then I can pick up what you guys left off. You know what I mean?
Right now I have like...
I called in once.
Five accessory apartments hanging.
Yeah, but we just, on the last, and did it that way too, so either way, I would keep that date.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, let's hold that date.
Okay.
Are we good?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else? No.
No. It's just saying, yeah, we're good.
Any other business? I have nothing.
I got nothing.
Make a motion.
No, other than, let me let Jeff know. So the switching out the computer, everybody's getting a new computer. This has software that we paid for to it, but if I, this is the second time we're switching it, so if the license is no good, we might have to buy a license, which would be about $200.
Software to tie that to your laptop you're talking about?
I have the disk, but it's, I mean, the disk is old now, but I got to wait and see what happens. But they wanted to switch my computer out today, and I'm like, no, not today.
Don't they have IT people here who can help?
They're out, they're not in the building. It's Boston Systems. They're not, we don't have an IT person in the building.
Okay.
So you got to call them. So they've been in and out, and I just never know when they're going to show up, and of course, they showed up today, and I'm like, no. But they have to do it by the end of June, so I told them maybe next week, because then I have to get the minutes off of this.
All right, are you good?
Hopefully it won't be long. Yep, good.
They get a motion to close business?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, no? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Can you ask her to give us five minutes? Good evening. Welcome to the Georgetown Zoning Board of Appeals. What is today's date? June 4, 2019. This is why Jeff's so organized. Georgetown Zoning Board of Appeals is going to conduct this meeting, and according to rules laid out in Chapter 48 of the General Laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Robert's Rules of Order, and its own particular set of rules entitled Rules of Procedure, a copy of which is on file with the town clerk. Another copy is available from the administrative assistant at this meeting. This meeting is being taped recorded for the purposes of taking minutes. Once the minutes are approved, the tape may be taped over. All right, first up, we have Gmail Disposal Corp., Carlton Drive. Do we need to read these, both these letters, and Patty?
Usually do.
You mind reading those? Jeff, thank you.
Okay. This is a letter dated June 4, 2019, to the Georgetown Zoning Board of Appeals regarding Gmail Disposal Corp., Carlton Drive Water Resource District application. Dear Board Members, as we discussed during the initial hearing on this application, it is appropriate to have this hearing conducted in conjunction with the technical site plan review by the planning board, so that additional engineering information is available. Therefore, on behalf of the applicant, Gmail Disposal Corp., I request that the hearing on the above referenced matter be continued to the board's meeting of September 10, 2019. Thank you for your consideration. Very truly yours, Nancy McKinnon. Yes, I can. Attorney for Gmail Disposal Corp. I'm just wondering, do we have to do these separately?
Yeah, do we have to, can we do them together and make a motion?
No, they're separate applications and separate parcels.
Okay.
I wasn't sure exactly what this one was, so...
I'll need to make a motion.
So I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to continue the hearing for the Water Resource District application for Gmail Disposal Corp. to September 10, 2019.
Second.
Thank you, Dave.
All the, any discussion? All those in favor?
Actually, I would like to mention one thing. I think if I read the bylaw correctly, that, and counsel correction for wrong, the site plan review has to be complete before we review this. Is that, do you read that the same way?
I think before you vote, but I think you might want to be considering things, because if you have quest, technical questions that the special permit review consultant will be looking at, you might want to be working that out.
Yeah, I think it says before that permit can be granted, right? Something like that, right?
Right, so I think before you vote, you want the site plan.
All right, okay. All right, thank you. Appreciate it. That's all I have.
Second.
Dave, second. Any discussion? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Let's continue. I have another data, a letter dated June 4 to the Georgetown Board of Appeals regarding 203 East Main Street, Gmail Disposal Corp. Dear Board Members, as you are aware, the applicant has filed a special permit application package with the Board of Appeals relative to a new transfer station located on Carlton Drive. Given this alternative, we do not wish to take up the hearing board's time discussing the pending East Main Street application, as that application may become moot. Therefore, the applicant requests a continuance of the pending 203 East Main Street hearing until the board's meeting of September 10, 2019. In the event that there is an issue with a quorum of the board members able to act on the 203 East Main Street application due to the continuance, the applicant understands that the risk is borne by the applicant. Thank you for your consideration. Very truly yours, Nancy McKinnon, attorney for Gmail Disposal. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to continue the hearing for 203 East Main Street, Gmail Disposal Corp. to September 10, 2019.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. 203 East Main Street, continued. Okay. Good evening. We're opening the hearing for, let's see, where are we? 258 Andover Street, which is the applicant Georgetown Flatbread LLC. Good evening, how are you? What's your name, sir?
Peter Brown.
Peter, how are you?
Good.
Nancy, good to see you.
Thank you.
I think, I think you know the members of the board by now.
I do.
We have...
I do, indeed.
1, 2, 3, 4, 5. So will Sharon be a voting member tonight?
I think so.
Yeah, Sharon, Sharon is a voting member. We have Paul Schillen, Jeff Moore, I'm Sean Dean, this is Dave Kapnis. I'm going to go ahead and read the legal notice here. A public hearing will be held on June 4, 2019, at 7:30 PM at the Georgetown Town Hall, 3rd Floor Meeting Room, for an application filed by 258 Andover Street LLC owner and applicant in Georgetown Flatbread LLC, applicant for the property located at 258-258R Andover Street Georgetown, Mass. 01833, in the RC District, and identified on assessor's map 5 lots 3 and 3E. The applicant is requesting to construct four bowling lanes accessory to the existing restaurant within the existing building, accessory indoor amusement, which is not permitted in the RC zone. The applicant requires a special permit under Mass. General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 9, and the Georgetown Zoning Bylaws, Chapter 165, Articles 2, Sections 8-11, use and intensity schedules for use not specifically listed in the schedule of uses in Chapter 165, Section 74-79. In the alternative, the applicant's appeal the decision of the Georgetown Building Inspector pursuant to Mass. General Laws 40A, Sections 8, 15, -17, and Georgetown Bylaw, Chapter 16598, on the basis that a special permit is not required for the proposed accessory for bowling lanes. Also found on the website for Massachusetts newspaper publishers, ad number 13790846, was posted in the Georgetown Record on 5/3 and 5/10 of 2019.
Thank you very much. My name is Nancy McKinnon. I'm here on behalf of the owner, 258 Andover Street LLC, as well as Georgetown Flatbread LLC, the applicant. With me tonight is Peter Brown, the Director of Operations, and we are requesting approval to renovate a portion of the interior of the existing clubhouse building to provide four bowling lanes accessory to the existing Flatbread Restaurant. Kind of an interesting concept. It occurs in other Flatbread locations, including Salem, Massachusetts. And as you know, this site is currently the Black Swan Country Club and facility, and on that property, we have a golf course, there's a pro shop, there's a swimming pool, tennis courts, and a full-service restaurant, which is the Flatbread Restaurant, as well as function rooms, all as a package and as a property that was approved in 1989 by virtue of a special permit, which permitted the golf course and accessory facilities and associate and accessory facilities there too. And what we are proposing to do is to add four bowling lanes accessory to the restaurant. It will be located entirely within the existing clubhouse building. There will be no addition to the clubhouse building necessary. This will be interior renovations only, which I'll show you on the plan in a moment. The bowling alley will be operated by the restaurant, by the restaurant employees, for the restaurant patrons. There will be no exterior access independent from the restaurant to the bowling lanes. Access the bowling lanes, you go through the restaurant. The restaurant employees seat you and operate the bowling lanes. And again, there are four bowling lanes. This is certainly not an independent business. This is an accessory amenity for patrons of the restaurant. It would be operated only during the hours when the restaurant is open. So this is not, again, this is not a separate business by any means. Flatbreads, when it came to town a few years ago, was certainly a welcome addition to Georgetown, and we think that this will be just an added amenity for the, for the restaurant patrons. The, as I can show you, you do have a site plan of the site itself. It is not changing at all. And then this is the floor plan of the entire clubhouse building. The restaurant is currently located in this area here, and you have the entrance here. This area here that we've dotted is the area where the interior renovations would take place. Again, no increase in square footage of the building, no exterior renovations. This area is currently a locker room and restrooms and those sorts of facilities. And what we're proposing...
This is a dumb question, Nancy. This is the first floor, right?
First floor.
Okay, because it's two, it's a two...
Yes, there's function facilities around the second floor. Second floor is not changed.
I've been in there, I've eaten pizza there a million times, and I'm not, I'm spatially challenged. Like, Paul and Jeff are really good at looking at stuff. I can't figure out where those lanes would go, because I know where the function room is off the restaurant.
This is the stairway to the function rooms, right? This is the restaurant. You go in the door of the restaurant, it's here. And pizza ovens are over here, right? And then this is seating area. And then this area here is now locker room. Okay? So that would be accessed, if you look on your second page, this is the demolition. These dots match up with the dots on the first page, so your restaurant is over here.
Sorry.
Okay? And then this is open to the restaurant. It will be opened up, and this, these are the lanes here. This is currently the locker room. Okay? So the lanes will come in here. This renovation will include a renovation of the women's locker room will be here. Existing elevator is here, existing office going in here, but the elevators, this area is not changing. So this is the existing door of the restaurant is down here. You come in, and then this is the L that I'm showing you.
Is it candle pin, or is it big ball bowling?
Candle.
Okay. Just curious.
Good question, though.
We had, we had a lot of questions on that.
All right, so this is what matches up to this area here. So these are where your lanes are, and this will be opened up and connected into the restaurant, which is here. So it all becomes, the restaurant becomes more of an L shape to allow for the lanes which are down here. All right? No increase in tables particularly, I mean, this is just going to be lanes, only four lanes.
Will there be like a bar in there, or any eating in there? It's just straight up bowling lanes?
There's a bowling area seating where you would normally seat when you're bowling, right? You have your lanes, and then you have your seating area behind it, and where the balls come out here. And then this is open to, to the restaurant.
People will be served as they're bowling?
Right, from the restaurant staff.
The bar is still there?
Yes.
The bar's still...
In the restaurant.
Same exact, yeah, same exact location.
So the bar, the bar is right in front of, I don't think I ever realized there was locker rooms behind it.
Bar is over here.
Because I've never been that far back. I don't know if I'm aware of that first restaurant footprint. I'm not even necessarily aware of what goes beyond that.
Are the men's lockers being eliminated?
They're being shrunk.
It's not, doesn't show it on the plans.
Yeah, in actuality, there's locker room, there's a woman's locker room that's on the other side of the corridor.
I see that next to the new shower.
Right.
And lockers.
Right, but across the hall, there's an old woman's locker room that will become a men's locker room.
Should be over here.
Right where it says planned notes, I think.
Yeah.
On the new plan, Dave.
I'm looking at that now.
Down the bottom, it says planned notes.
Mm-hmm, got it.
I think right in, right in there, maybe.
I think, I think right in, right in there, maybe.
All right, so it's simply an amenity for restaurant patrons, again, operated by the restaurant during the hours of operation of the restaurant, through the restaurant, not a separate access point, and certainly associated completely and as part of the restaurant use. So, the application provides two ways of getting at the approval. The building inspector has issued a decision where he thinks we need a special permit to provide for this indoor amusement accessory to the restaurant use, as a use not permitted specifically as a use under the table of uses, and therefore we need a special permit. I think we meet all of the requirements for a special permit, as I've indicated in the application. This use is accessory to the existing restaurant use. It is certainly a desirable for public convenience and welfare as an amenity for the restaurant patrons and their families. It's very popular with, with families, with, with kids. It will not overload any public water or other municipal service, so as unduly subject any area to hazards, to hazards affecting health, safety, or general welfare. It will not impair the integrity or character of the district or adjoining districts, and there will be no visible changes to the exterior of the clubhouse building or the property. And it will not cause an excess of the particular use which could be detrimental to the character of the neighborhood, and it will provide an appropriate amenity to the restaurant dining patrons, and therefore it certainly is in harmony with the intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw, as well as the existing uses on this site. So should the board deem that a special permit is required, I think that we meet all of the requirements for that special permit. However, in the alternative, we have appealed the building inspector's decision because the, this property operates under a special permit eighty-nine fifteen that was granted by this board that allowed the operation of the golf club with, quote, "related activities, facilities, and their accessory uses." And this restaurant is a related facility to the, to the golf operation, as is the pool and the tennis courts and the pro shop and other facilities that are on this site that have operated for many years. We are adding an accessory use to that, which is four bowling lanes. And as a result, given that there are no additions to the site plan to accommodate this accessory use, the site plan that was approved in eighty-nine does not change with the addition of this use. The operation of the site generally will not change as a result of this use. Therefore, I think that the eighty-nine fifteen special permit that granted a special permit for the golf activities, as well as the associated facilities and their accessory uses, encompasses adding four bowling lanes as an amenity to the restaurant use. So I think that, that we have requested that you overturn the decision of the, the building inspector and find that a special permit isn't required because it is encompassed in the decision from nineteen eighty-nine. So there, there we have it. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Can I, I'm gonna ask, can I ask Jeff a question? So, pretty much everybody in this twenty-eleven decision was on the board, was in the room. So what, I'm just, I'm trying to follow that procedure. You were talking about a decision from eighty-nine, which was for golf. Twenty-eleven as for the restaurant?
Right, no, there's, there was original special permit, which was for golf, related activities, facilities, and their accessory uses. It was originally with that plan, there was a pub that was with the golf course, which operated as part of the golf course.
I don't know.
This, this was for some signage, because the pub migrated into a restaurant, which then became independently owned and operated, which I think you are now, right? You're independently owned and operated.
Well, we're a franchise of, of Flatbread, but we're owned by the same entity that owns the golf course.
All right. And so the restaurant became, Keon's or Holloway's first?
Keon's.
I can't remember which came first.
Keon's and Holloway's.
Yeah, it was Keon's. They decided that they needed signage because as an independently operating entity, they weren't getting enough traffic flow through there, so they came and asked for some signage, and the board found that the signage was appropriate to this decision, and that's when that was changed. Is there another, is there another change to that special permit as well? I think there was one other one.
There was to allow the barn, renovations to a barn, and that was required because there was a change to the site plan required for that.
Cart barn? Was that the cart barn? I think, was that right?
I think so. I think there were actually a couple.
I don't think that one is in here, right?
It was an addition.
Right, because that was something separate.
When the pro shop was added.
When the pro shop was added, there was a difference, right?
Yeah, and there's a, the cart barn, which is...
Jack's still there.
Yes.
Right. And that was required not because of the use, but because there was a change in the site plan that was originally approved to accommodate that. So, there we have it. So the original nineteen eighty, nineteen eighty-nine decision was not by members, sitting members of this board. The two thousand and eleven decision has a lot of familiar names.
Do you haven't been here since eighty-nine?
No, yeah. Been there that long. Thank goodness.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'm not feeling very well. I think I'm gonna have to sit down, okay? Take off.
Absolutely.
I think it's a great idea. I just, I'm not feeling very good right now, so, okay. Thank you, guys.
Okay.
I'll be okay.
Okay. Do you need, do you need us to take you anywhere?
No, 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 I'm fine. I'm just gonna head home. Thank you. It's a great idea, by the way.
I'll text you, Paul, okay?
Thank you very much, guys.
Do we still have a quorum?
Um, I, yeah, four.
Okay, I get it.
Are you comfortable? Okay. All right. Sir, you've been patiently waiting, do you wanna, did you sign in?
Yes, he did.
At the podium, you wanna stand up and say your name and...
My name's James McGuire, live at Three Forty Andover Street. And in passing the golf course, you see a tanker truck there with the septic system. Is this gonna affect your septic system at all?
Uh, we don't...
And how frequently do you pump that out?
We do that quarterly. We don't expect any real addition because we're not adding tables or seats, so we don't believe, I mean, if, if we do happen to get a few more people in, we would...
Is there a problem with the system up there?
Uh, no.
Because it seems quite frequent you see a tanker truck up there.
Uh, well, I mean, we are...
I pass by every day.
We are busy, I mean, I know it does seem quite often, but it's, it's just at regular intervals, so, and there's been no problems with the system.
It would just appear that way, by the frequency of the trucking.
Didn't get anything from the water.
Or it's proactive preventive maintenance.
That's true.
Because the last thing you want is a problem out there.
Well, and, and if you notice, where they do pump is, it's right in front of the restaurant, so, first, we, we always schedule it at like seven thirty in the morning before the restaurant opens at ten or eleven.
She's passing by.
Yeah, and so, you know, that's the last thing you wanna see when you go into a restaurant.
I'm trying to remember from where, where you live.
I live...
Can you see the golf court? You're further away. It's just that you noticed it, and you were just wondering if there's...
The whole golf course drains down onto my property.
Okay, is there an issue from, as a resident? I'm trying to get an understanding of...
I'm concerned about the chemicals that have been put on the golf course.
On the golf course?
And then get it down onto my property.
Okay.
It's my main concern.
Okay.
And there was, in that special permit that you were giving, it's because of safety, the, the water department was supposed to check that quarterly, and that's never been done. That's for chemicals or whatever was going on with my property.
Would that be something that he would bring to the building inspector's attention, the water department's, if there's a concern?
That's...
Possibly.
Maybe it's probably not within our...
Yeah, in addition to permit that the water, quarterly testing of the runoff and watershed area will be submitted to the water department, and specific tests required will be the decision of the water department, so. Do you know if it's being done on a quarterly basis, or...
I, I would have to check. I don't know off, offhand.
I checked with the water manager, and he says they don't know anything about it.
There's a new, there's an interim water manager.
So if a resident, so the question is, if a resident has a concern about that, where does the resident go?
The water department.
The water department?
Dave, um, Dave Petefield was water superintendent.
Well, if that's not being done, it would go to the zoning enforcement officer, who would be the one who would make sure that the conditions are being met.
I know it's the building inspector, right?
So you'd go to Les.
Well, they, I know what's coming down through the...
Did you happen to ask Les about this as well?
Pardon me?
Did you happen to ask the, the building inspector about it as well?
I haven't gone to see the building inspector, no. I've talked to the water manager about it, and they had a flyer that they put out a few years back, and said that they did do it, but he said he knew nothing about it. And I know it's a septic system up there that is...
I think Les, I mean, your point is, is a good one, and if that's not being done, it is an ongoing condition of the original special permit.
Exactly, and part of safety, that's our...
No, please, yeah.
I don't wanna, I have a developed autoimmune, autoimmune disease where any chemicals, any spraying can affect my health, and that is all coming down on my property, so.
So I think, it sounds like the, of course, if that's, if that's one of your concerns, you would go to the building inspector.
I, I've gone, I've gone through this through the board of health, and because...
I think the building inspector enforces the conditions of our, of our decision, so if, if there's a question of whether the condition's being met, the first course of action, I believe, is to go to the building inspector. The building inspector then has an obligation to be sure that the condition's being met, and then it probably, so I, I think that if, if that's part of the concern, I think that's where you would start. I'm also trying to get a better understanding of what you're seeing on the tanker truck part, or if that's just a...
Well, that, that's...
Observation and your questioning.
Your septic up there, then.
Yeah, okay.
You know, they've already got a system up there, and it's just been pouring down on my property.
It states quarterly testing will be submitted to the water department. It does not state who is responsible and does this testing.
Well, the testing will be at the decision of the water department, but the owner, the person who's been issued the permit, is responsible for submitting to the water department.
That's how I interpret this. Not, the water department is not doing the actual testing. Whoever's doing the testing was required, would be required to submit it to the water department. Am I misinterpreting this somehow?
The, the operator is supposed to take samples and submit it to the water department, and whether that's being done or not, it sounds like perhaps it's not.
It's not.
I think, I remember back in, I wanna say ninety-seven or so, like when Jenko, before Jack purchased it, um, Mr. Watchkin?
Right, Mr. Watch.
Yeah, the old owner. I think they started it, but I don't know if it ever continued.
Well, I mean, this permit is active, okay? Everything that has been going on ever since relies back to this, and that...
Yeah, I've been down there talking.
We will, we, this is an issue that's part of the, the permit. It's not part of bowling lanes, however. It's part of the permit, so we'll look into this condition, because as I read this, it says quarterly testing of the runoff and watershed areas will be submitted to the water department. Specific tests required will be the decision of the water department, so.
Right.
Maybe something happened where the water department said, hey, you're good. You know, additional testing isn't necessary or whatever. We'll look into it and, and make sure that the conditions are, are being met, whatever needs to be done.
But that said, as a resident, I think your course of action, if that is your concern, the course of action would be first to go to the building inspector, who's the enforcer of the conditions of that special permit.
But this, this permit is in play right now. If, if there's conditions that aren't being met on the existing permit, then...
He makes a complaint with the building inspector, right?
No, we, we're about to act on this permit, this one.
But that, this one doesn't have any to do with testing.
It has everything to do with this permit, because if this is an accessory to that, and that was an accessory to this, this, the entire thing hinges on this permit, and if there's something going on with this...
Right, okay.
Well, yeah, we're being asked to make, otherwise this would be an excluded use in this zone. So, you know, the fact that it's an accessory to the existing permit that's out there, this, this is important.
So this is part of our decision today?
Well, I think it's important to make sure that, that the original conditions of the permit are being met, and then when I'm saying they're not, I bet, I'm, they probably are.
Right, which is why we're gonna look into it, and...
Is it?
Okay.
And we will make sure that this is being followed. We are not asking for a change to that permit, uh, condition, so.
Okay.
We'll look into it.
So what, what is my, what should I do?
I, I think at this point, the applicant is gonna go ahead and take a look at the history of this, and perhaps check with, with Les as well, on, on the history of this, to, to take a look at what's going on with that, with that water testing. It should be being done. If it isn't, then they'll, they'll come back to us and let us, let us know what's, what's happening. I would suggest that maybe we get this resolved before the board makes a decision.
And how do I get notified?
You should go talk to the building inspector yourself as well. While they're looking into it, you have the reference data, I believe you already have a copy of this.
Oh.
Okay, so, you're going to introduce yourself, and say, you know, I met with the ZVA during this hearing, and there was a concern, maybe that all the conditions of this previous permit had not been being followed, and right now the applicant couldn't answer, okay? And you don't have any information, and you'd like to find out, you know, what is going on, and who's gonna be doing the testing, and who's responsible for it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Put that to our attention.
Appreciate it.
Can I ask about bowling for a second?
Absolutely. Let's talk about bowling.
Is, um, required to dine and order a bowl, or can you bowl intentionally dining, or what's, what's...
I, I mean, you'll be able to rent a lane for a period of time.
Whether or not you order dinner?
If you didn't wanna eat or have something to drink while you're doing it, we wouldn't force you to do that, but it would still be the revenue of the restaurant.
Are there limitations on, on how many parties can take up a lane? Like, I, I kinda think, I know where Jeff's going, like, I'm a party of twenty, and I wanna have a birthday party, could I just call you up and say, hey, I wanna, I wanna reserve a, a lane, and I'm gonna bring twenty people down and have some...
Well, for a, a group like that, you'd probably reserve all four lanes for an hour or possibly two hours. We do that in Salem at a similar, we have four lanes at our Flatbread location in Salem, and groups can rent one lane, two lanes, or the four lanes, depending upon how many people, and have a birthday party, or just a group of people, or whoever they wanna do it.
Yeah, Flatbreads doesn't take reservations, I don't think, right?
No, we, we do for bowling.
Right.
At certain times, but not at restaurants.
Some places will have dinner, if you make dinner reservations, you gotta preference on the lanes, because the lanes get full. If you wanna go in just to bowl, you can't, unless you have dinner, which kinda really ties things together, so. The lanes get very busy. If you wanna make a dinner reservation at seven, we'll lock you in for an eight o'clock bowl, so you can have dinner in that bowl, or, or at the same time, or what have you, something like that. But without the reservations, that model doesn't work. I was, I was just kinda getting at whether, whether this is, you know, you're gonna go there for pizza, which people would mostly do, but you can also go in and, and just bowl if you, if you have drinks or whatever, you don't necessarily have to have pizza.
Right.
Do you envision any change to signage? Signage is, has historically been a bit of an issue over here.
We don't, I mean, it'll take a little while for people to, and the word, to get around it, oh yeah, there's bowling at, at Flatbread. I mean, if we did, if we did think we needed to adjust the signage, of course, we'd come back.
Yeah, 'cause that was a...
But we're not anticipating that.
Will there be any noise barrier from the, the lane to the restaurant?
Uh, there will be, you know, a slight wall, but there'll be an open area where we're a little more concerned about the noise going upstairs.
Okay.
So we're gonna be having a sound engineer looking at that, because the, most of the noise is down the far end where the pit is and the pins.
On the other side, right.
The balls crashing.
Right.
Yeah, there was a problem originally, and I don't, I don't know if it's really an issue anymore, but that, there's a lot of echo in that restaurant area. I know with all the wood trim now, it, it certainly helps, but when...
Yeah, we've put a lot of soundproofing material up to help with that, and we'll, we'll do that again. All the way down the lanes.
It's gonna be like a big speaker going right through there. Anyway.
Thanks, Patty.
So I, I have a question that's probably for Nancy, and I, it sounds like maybe you're gonna have to come back with a little bit more information on the existing permit before we take action anyway, but I don't know where this is gonna go.
I, I don't know. I may have an idea about that, but...
I, I think the, I think this whole integration with the bowling and the restaurant is conceptual... I, I think the, I think this whole integration with the bowling and the restaurant is, conceptually, it's, I'm, it's cool, it's fine. I, I think the, the fact that this particular restaurant is accessory to a golf course is very, very weird. I'm sorry, I didn't know what other way to put it. It's a very strange arrangement. Um, I'm not, not that I'm not in favor of this. I'm a little concerned with the, this, sort of the scope creep, if you will, of what was originally in this permit, and then what this whole club is sort of becoming slowly over time. The pool is now shut down, the tennis courts aren't really operating, it's becoming less of a private club, more of a public club. The restaurant, which was a pub to the golf course as an accessory, the restaurant's not listed in the original permit. A pub was part of the original golf club, which could certainly be part of, you know, an accessory use to the club. They had a function facility, pools, tennis courts, all the stuff you described. It was a country club. Things changed, ownership changed, the restaurant became independently owned and operated. That wasn't really working, so they had to change some signage, and now that restaurant really became something independent of the golf operations. And now it became Flatbreads, which was, you know, okay, it's doing well. I like Flatbreads, I, at Flatbreads, I go there. But the mix of that type of restaurant with golf operations is just a very odd mix to me personally. It's successful, I think it's doing well. I'm not gonna judge, but, and now to add bowling in, you could almost argue that anything, this is my point, the, the argument you're making is, is valid. I think it's, you, we can look at it. But almost anything, an arcade, or, you know, uh, anything could go in here, and you could argue that it's an accessory to the accessory of the original permit, and on and on it goes. I mean, you could almost say, I mean, indoor amusement is excluded in this zone. A restaurant is an excluded use in this zone. But for the fact that this is part of a club, these are accessory uses and, and that argument can be made. So I'd like to get comfortable how this is written so that it doesn't keep going and going and going to, to something else. I mean, I don't know, I understand the argument, and I, I think it's, it's legally sound. I'm, I'm not an attorney. But it's kinda like, well, that's not allowed, and this is not allowed, but if we look at it this way.
They got this.
Yeah, and they got it, and then it kinda migrated to something else. And now, and honestly, I look back on the signage thing, and, you know, we, this, I, I don't oppose the fact that they were given additional signage. I was part of that decision. Signage isn't a bad place. That Flatbreads, maybe not for advertising, but everybody tries to turn in there when they come in, 'cause a lot of people come for the first time. They're there for a, a prom, or they're there for, you know, a party, a private party, and they come around the corner and they see the sign, and they go to turn in there. And that's why you see tire ruts on the lawn quite often, and, and certainly in the winter, if, within two weeks of a snowstorm, if you go in there, you see tire tracks in the snow because people are trying to turn in there. So it was a little bit of a oversight, I think, on this board's part as to where that should go and how, how that should, should be done. Um, I'm kinda digressing a little bit. But I'd like to get a little more comfortable how we could craft a decision under a special permit that would make it clear that this is in a, a, a specific accessory to an existing use that ties that to the restaurant, that really ties the restaurant to the, to the, to the original permit. And that is, I, I, I guess I'm putting the owner on, on notice that, look, you know, what if it was a, a workout facility you wanted to put in there or something? Well, that's part of a club. Okay, well, it's gonna be operated by, you know, Planet Fitness or something, but it's gonna be inside the building and we're not gonna, well, it, it could be anything. I mean, and, and that really becomes, and this is my, I'm not, again, I'm, I'm not opposed to this. I wanna figure out how we can do this in a way that says, you know, we've looked at this very carefully, and we can consider this an accessory to the golf club, because that's what's there, um, without bending things too far and allowing stuff down the road. I'm just trying to think it through.
I'm with you, and I was thinking, I was thinking about this too, and, and I think you're sort, and maybe it gets into semantics, but there, there's two sort of proposed arguments being made. I think where you're going is, is the second one.
Well, the second one.
Relative to the original one. I, I, I'm, I'm just, I'll show my hand. I, I'm in favor of granting a special permit for the lanes, but, but a spe- just a special permit for the lanes, that's it, not tied to the original.
Well, it has to be because.
Tied to.
You gotta look in the table of uses, and you've gotta, you, you can't, you can't say, well.
But, so I don't.
How is it not indoor amusement, I guess, is how I was really, you know, how is it? Because an accessory to a restaurant. Well, how is that allowed? Well, that's an accessory to a club. So you started with a golf club, and then you got a restaurant, and now you got a lane, and it's all because it's an accessory to everything else. I just don't think, and, and this is my point, I, when this original permit, I was not part of it, was granted, it was a golf club, and it was envisioned you were gonna have a country club, and that was fine. And it was granted without a, a tremendous number of stipulations. There were some plans submitted.
'Cause I don't see it.
And I don't think that, that, you know, a Flatbreads restaurant was necessarily envisioned at the time. Uh, this could be, somebody theoretically could come in and, and say, you know, Flatbreads isn't working out, we got this permit, uh, we got bowling, let's make it Chuck E. Cheese. Let's bring Chuck E. Cheese in, because that's, the kids really love this place. I'm not, I'm not, I'm just saying, we have to think long-term, right? Um, and geez, an arcade would really work well, so that's an accessory, you know. Once this is in and it's done, okay, now that's the use now. So now, then an accessory to anything else, the argument can go on and on in perpetuity.
But would they have to come back before the board?
They do have to come back.
Okay.
You know, and that's maybe, maybe that's the process, but I just feel like it's changed an awful lot, and I, I, I like the idea.
Okay.
I'd like to help you, help, like to have you help me get to yes on how this can be.
All right. Let me help you.
Drafted, all right.
With that, because I think it, there actually is more of a connection, uh, here than, than you might think. What was permitted in eighty-nine was, uh, outdoor amusement special permit in the form of a golf club, uh, and a golf course with related activities. Um, and the restaurant has been part of that, whether it was a pub, it was a food service establishment, has been part of that. Now, and it's gone through different morphings, but right now, uh, the golf club and the restaurant are operated by the same principles. Different corporate entity, but the same principles, as you can see in, in the application. Uh, so really, they, they are back merged together where they had kind of been separate for a little while when Keon's was involved. Um, but the idea of amusement and recreation has really been the foundation of this from the beginning. Now we're adding an accessory use that is an amusement. It is an indoor amusement as opposed to an outdoor amusement. And I think it fits very well with the golf course use and the family activities of a golf course use, and you, and you may have the family with the, with playing golf, and then you go in and you have pizza, and you have uh, an indoor amusement activity that goes along with that, which is a very small portion of this business with four lanes. If we were coming in here with a full-blown bowling alley with twenty lanes, that would be something very different. This is just an added amenity to the restaurant use that's already there, and I think it does tie in well with the original special permit of an outdoor amusement type of use.
Yeah, I mean, but indoor amusement is an excluded use. That's, that's the point, so you have to, that, and that's all.
But it's accessory, but it's not separate.
Not excluded necessarily with this argument. I, I get it.
But it's, and it's not, um, it's not a standalone.
You're right.
Use.
Right.
It is absolutely accessory. Four lanes of bowling isn't a separate business.
Can we condition any ad- additional potential additions of amusement, like, that they would have to obviously.
Yeah, I mean.
Before the board, ju- just so, 'cause I, I'm with you now, and, and the way I read it, like, could, could then you just say, hey, we're gonna put video games in the corner, we're gonna put a fifty video game arcade?
You could easily make the argument that an arcade is an accessory, because almost every bowling alley has an arcade.
Exactly.
But then, but, but to Jeff's point, like, where, where does it keep going from there?
And Keon's might become something else, they just put a different sign.
There is a precedent, there's a couple of Flatbreads that do bowling alleys, but, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, I'm just saying that I want.
Well, I have been very specific in my application, and I think you can be specific in your special permit. That this is four lanes. This is what we've asked, we've given you a plan, and we've given you the specifics of how it's going to operate. That it's not going to be a separate business, that it's going to be through the restaurant, that it's not going to have its separate entrance, and it is going to be an amenity to the restaurant. And it's four lanes, and that's what we're, that's what we're looking for. Now, there are restaurants in town where you do have other types of amenities that go along. Amusements, you've got golf simulators, you've got other things that go on in other restaurants. So this is, this really is, I think, accessory to the, the restaurant use. But in this case, we can be very specific, and if you wanna handle it as a special permit, that was part of the application, I'm fine with handling it that way, and you can condition it so that it's, you can't make any changes to it, you can't make any additions to it.
How about any change to the restaurant requiring a special permit? Um, and what I'm, what I'm getting at is, in, in, in all honesty, worst-case scenario, um, you know, technically, you could put a Burger King in there or something. I mean, you could. It's a restaurant, you just sold out to another restaurant without making any changes to the outside, maybe not, whatever. I mean, it's a bad example, but it could.
Well, that's a bad example, but I get what you're saying.
It could be Chuck E. Cheese, okay?
Or Starbucks.
Or whatever. I mean, and, and it could be done.
You're mixing fast foods with it, which kinda.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying.
It's the argument a little bit, but a restaurant.
Flatbreads went in there without any change to the special permit, okay? It was, it was more of a pub, it was a restaurant, and now it's a brick oven pizza place. Fine.
It's a restaurant.
But it's, it's very different than what it was. Um, not that that would not have been allowed, but it just, and now it's becoming something a little different too, and so, and you're here because there's a change, which is, which is great. That's part of the process.
Right.
We have a chance here to say, okay, let's take a look at it. Um, if this goes in and then, for whatever reasons, the owners decide to do something else, and this happens over time, somebody else comes in, says, well, I have a restaurant, I can, I can, without really changing this use, I can, I can change this whole restaurant to something else. That could then change this whole thing a little more without us ever having the opportunity to, to say, wait a second, you know.
Can we condition potential future quality of, and type of restaurant?
I mean, I don't know, I just, I envision.
But a restaurant is a prohibited use as well in the R C district, right?
Right, I mean, and that's kinda where I'm.
So the, I think, I mean, now that you've brought this up, I'm looking at it now, thanks to Patty for giving me a new book.
A club, a club was allowed by special permit. That's what started this whole thing, it was a club.
Right, right, and then it was, yeah, that makes sense. I'm, I'm understanding better now. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
A golf, a golf course, I don't think is listed. So it was a club, and so that was, that was it. And now it's a restaurant with a bowling alley, and.
Right.
It's, it's, it's migrating to something a little different, I think, than what was originally envisioned as a golf club, and that's not necessarily a bad thing.
Right.
But when it comes to the code and how we draft our decisions legally.
Yep.
And how we make our findings, I'm just, the last time we did it was kinda like, eh, okay, signage is not a big deal. Ah, it's getting to be a little bit more. I, I just, like, I would like, I'm just asking for a little help, I.
Yeah.
Well, I think, and I, as I said, my application was very specific, and I think your decision can be very specific and say that you've got an existing restaurant, that existing restaurant is governed in operation in part under the liquor license that issued by the selectmen, which I gave you a copy of here.
Right, yeah.
So if we are going to, um, we can be very specific with regard to what we're asking for, which is the bowling lanes, where they will be, that they will be candle pin bowling lanes. They will not be candle pin bowling lanes and something else, but they will be four. Candle pin bowling lanes operated only during the hours of operation of the restaurant, operated by the restaurant. You're not, it's not going to be a separate entity.
And you have plans, which, I mean, you have plans.
And we've got the four plans that we've given you that are very specific and, and very detailed.
I mean, there was another application for outdoor amusement that a while ago. I, I didn't get comfortable there because it was really just for a particular use, and.
For this, for this property?
No, no, this was for.
A different property.
Well, the mini golf.
Yeah, I remember that, yeah.
And it was for, oh, mini golf, and there wasn't, there was really no specific plan. I got, hey, you know, this could become anything. If it doesn't work out.
Yeah, 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 I remember you talking about this.
If it doesn't work out, things can get bought and sold, and you get a use, you get a permit for a use, and it goes, it gets sold, and, you know, it can, it can turn into something that you didn't think, oh, yeah, conceptually, it all sounds great. This is a little different here because it is in the building.
Right.
You do have plans, I.
I would lean toward supporting this with specific conditions. You're right, you hit it right on the head. Bowling lanes, video games, okay? You know, all of a sudden, it's an arcade. And the arcades are making more money than the video games. Well, jeez, you know.
Or the golf course, maybe.
You know what I mean?
Or the pool, 'cause, because the pool is.
I mean, I would support that with conditions that it doesn't extend beyond the bowling lanes. I think it's a, I think it's a good idea. I don't think it would, it's detrimental to anything. You know, the only thing that I did notice in the presentation is that it's, it's not just for the restaurant and its patrons. This is wide open to the public, you know, um, leagues can come in when they want them, when they want them, right? Private parties can rent it.
Private parties could rent the restaurant.
I thought you said they could also rent the lanes.
Yes, I think you did say that, but, but you could.
Independent of being a patron of the restaurant.
But they don't necessarily have to go in and actually wine and dine there, you know? If somebody was going in for a birthday party, say.
Well, if they want any refreshment.
They can't bring their own food.
Right.
Right, they don't, but they don't have to eat.
But the restaurant, presence at the restaurant is not a condition of bowling.
Well, you can walk into a restaurant with other people and sit down and not eat.
But you can't bowl.
I just wanna be clear.
Well, you can't bowl if there are no lanes. That is true. You are absolutely correct there, but, I I think the likelihood of having somebody come in and just say, I just want a bowl, and not order anything, order any drinks, when you are walking into a restaurant, I think is unlikely that that would happen.
Unlikely, but it's still possible.
I suppose, you know.
A lot of things, a lot of things are possible.
Trust me, anything's possible.
Yeah, but it, but that really is not the intent here, and that's not what the clientele will be. This is an amenity to the restaurant, for the, for the restaurant patrons.
Will alcoholic beverages be allowed in that area?
If we alter the, the liquor license to provide for that small area, that small seating area, to the extent that that small seating area isn't covered, we would have to alter.
It's not part of this application at this point.
It doesn't come to you.
It goes to the selectmen.
That's the selectmen. But basically, there's very, only a very small section where there would be, um, seating where alcoholic beverages would be here, and I, and we are aware of that if we need to adjust the liquor license application before the selectmen to encompass that square footage of area here. We would do that. So is the intent that if you were bowling, could you have your beer and a, and a pizza? Yes, that's the intent.
Well, I think they go together.
Mm-hmm, yeah, they, they do. I think they do, and we've discussed this, that, but it's not this board that we would have to, to go to.
I'm a fan of the Super Bowl, they go together.
Well, that's the thing. This isn't, that's not what this is supposed to be, so, uh, you know, and you look at other places that kind of overlap some of these services. I'll say not necessarily uses, but services, and you look at, say, Cedar Dale, for example. I mean, they don't have bowling, but, you know, there could be anything that they do. They, they got the pool, and they got the workout facilities, and they have all these other things that, I'm not talking about this specifically, I'm saying down the line. This, this argument can be used at this facility for just about anything, and avoid the need for variance because they have a club with a special permit, and almost anything can be considered an accessory to it if you argue hard enough, or you think about it hard enough.
Well, I.
And, and, and again, I'm not, this is not inappropriate, what you're asking for.
Right.
I just don't wanna see this thing become something subs- down the road substantially different than what was originally permitted, unless we, somebody redoes the whole permit to say it's something else.
Uh, yeah, I'm not comfortable.
Or at least being able to look at, any, any change going forward needs to come back somehow, and so.
I don't think it's an, an accessory to, to the use here. I think, I, I'm comfortable with granting a special permit so long as there's conditions sufficient enough to contain any scope creep of what already exists, specific to four bowling lanes and nothing more, and if we can articulate it sufficiently enough to do that, I'm, I'm.
But the special permit would have to determine that it's an accessory, which is, which is fine. I mean.
But, but a special permit would be requ- required.
For a, but, except for an indoor amusement as an accessory use, is that?
As accessory to the existing.
It has to be an accessory too, 'cause indoor amusement is not allowed in this district, so this is what I'm getting at.
That's right, and that's what the building inspector said, and that's what we have requested, is that special permit, and I think part of what we're wrestling with a little bit here was the wording of the nineteen eighty-nine special permit, which was very broad.
Right.
And it said, facilities and accessory uses, and it was not specific. And I think based on that decision, which was the basis for, um, the appeal, I think. I think we have a legal argument to say that it's encompassed under that original special permit. The building inspector, I believe, is in more in agreement with what you're saying, which is, yeah, it's going to be accessory to the restaurant, but let's get a special permit to be specific so that we know exactly what it is, and that's fine.
Can we indicate any additional accessory uses sought by, on this property have to seek a special permit?
They would, well, they would have to come to us anyway because it's a matter of law.
As a matter of law.
The permit, right?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so, I mean, that mechanism just exists as a matter of zoning, so.
All you would be doing is granting the special permit to allow four lanes in conjunction with this restaurant, accessory to the restaurant.
Which is an accessory to the golf club.
Which is an accessory to the club.
Yes.
I mean, it's all really, the root is really the club.
That's.
And I'll be honest, I'm not sure how the restaurant, it's, it's, there's no, there was no special, there was no permit modification when the restaurant changed from a pub to.
Do you think we should do that?
No, not necessarily, because it's done, it's been operating, they're operating illegally.
And I will tell you that the building inspector and I went through the files in great detail to piece all these pieces together since 1989 and.
So how did the restaurant get, get expanded and renovated back when? Was it just an expansion of the existing use?
Yes, within the, well, it was the original 1989 permit, and then building permits came and went over time associated with that and added the function rooms and things like that, but it all fell under the facilities and accessory uses language of the 1989 decision.
So when they did the pizza oven, was there a permit that had to get pulled?
Building permit, sure.
Yeah, building.
And the building permit, occupancy permit.
That's what I'm saying, is it can go from flatbreads, which everybody, you know, say, yeah, it's quaint, it's cool.
It's Chuck E. Cheese.
It could go to anything, and it wouldn't come here because it's still a restaurant, so you can make a restaurant into just about anything, and that's.
There's water under the bridge for us now, but this is not what's on the table now.
Yeah, I was saying, you know, let's try to, and the other thing is that, I don't know if the plan, did you ever find the plans? Or did you?
For?
For the original permit?
I looked at it, sure.
Oh, yeah, they're still all in there. So those plans have never been modified, I don't think, right?
The site plan itself has been modified a couple of times, as I said, in associated, in association with the barn, a barn renovations and things like that. There was an application before you a few years back requesting a special permit to add a residential use. And that.
I don't remember that.
Added in a different building, and that's what triggered some, a requirement to come before you then. That didn't go forward, it was adding a residential use. But the, clearly, the 1989 decision talked about food service, it talked about a restaurant where you, whether you call it a pub or a restaurant, there was food service was contemplated. And for a club-type of facility, food service usually is part, that's not a stretch to have a restaurant associated with, with a club, so, or with a golf course.
But if the original plan showed flatbread pizza in there as an entity, it would have been a little like, you know, it, it would have been a little weird, you know?
Yeah, it didn't talk about the specifics of what type of restaurant.
No, I mean, and it's not listed in the decision, it was in the plans, I think it showed food service area.
And I guess maybe where we can kind of get swayed a little bit is if we talk about flatbreads, because flatbreads has built a, built a brand, a very good brand, a family-oriented brand.
That includes bowling alleys in certain locations.
For example, when I do permitting for coffee shops, I'll call it a coffee shop as opposed to Dunkin' Donuts because certain, certain brands carry certain baggage with them. But if you look at flatbreads menu, you've got some wine, you've got some beer, you've got wonderful salads, you've got pizzas. That's a restaurant, you know, you could call it anything.
Right, and some may say, well, that, that's appropriate for this location, or maybe, I think it's a little weird with golf, but that's just me.
Oh, I think it actually fits pretty well.
When you make the turn after nine, you don't really want to carry a slice of pizza around, you know, looking for a hamburger or something. If you know, if you play golf, you don't, you don't eat pizza while you're playing golf, but anyway, that's just me. It's successful, you're obviously doing well, you know, golfers come and go, whatever, I, it's none of my business to play. I'm, I wouldn't, I'm glad the place is doing well. I mean, that's the whole reason why we wanted signage, because we wanted to make sure that the place was not going to have, you know, issues financially and so forth, but, you know, I, I just, different restaurants, as you were alluding to with coffee shop, they can be quite different, and the fact that it is a restaurant doesn't mean it is going to be this particular restaurant forever. And without coming before the board, even if we were to grant this permit, it's kind of as drafted, become this board, this could really change to something substantially different without any reason to come before this board, because if you food, serve food, you're a restaurant, and because the use is there as a restaurant, they can go get a building permit and renovate it into anything they want. And that's what, kind of what has been done. And now that's expanding further into something a little different, which I think is fine in this case, really. I'm just sort of putting the owner on notice a little bit that I, and I'd just like to see this as an opportunity to say, okay, you can do this, but anything else that happens, be it maybe a different, even if the restaurant gets renovated or something, I don't, I don't know, I.
So you would heavily condition it, is that what you're thinking?
Something.
Do you have any suggestions, counsel?
Yes, I think the restaurant use is there, it has been there for a long time, it takes up a certain portion of the building as we've demonstrated in our plans, you've got floor plans that show you that. What we're here for is to add an indoor amusement accessory component to that, and I think you can be very specific, that it's four lanes as shown on the plan, and that's what's being approved. And any other additions or other accessory uses would have to come back to you if there were changes. Now, changing the restaurant, I mean, the restaurant is what it is, and it's a restaurant, and adding in provisions to change what's already permitted there is not something that, that the applicant would be interested in doing. But conditioning what's before you tonight, which is adding four bowling lanes, absolutely. The application was specific, and we can.
No, just a matter of housekeeping, I just want to read these exhibits and record, just procedural stuff, fun stuff. So, plans, exhibit A, site plan of landed at nine, or dated three twenty-seven ninety-six by, is that right? S and W, Land Tech of Groveland, Mass.
Yes, it's an older plan.
That's the old site plan.
Okay, exhibit B, example one point oh Black Swan Country Club renovations, existing conditions dated two nineteen of nineteen. Exhibit C, sheet D one point one demolition of floor plan dated two eighteen nineteen. Exhibit C, sheet A one point one bowling floor plan dated two eighteen of twenty nineteen. Counsel, do you have the, in your stack of papers, the, the plans marked, they're noted in the original decision of eighty-nine, plans marked as exhibit B? They were the plans that were associated with.
That was the plan, that was mine.
I'm just curious if you had them on you.
I think it's that one right there. That was mine, because exhibit B, it's.
I'm just curious.
It's, it.
It's a site plan, which we're not changing.
It's an, it's old, that's how I got to print it, that's the only way I got to print it.
Good luck.
There's a restaurant in there somewhere.
Are those all the exhibits you're reading in?
Health club, tennis courts, existing barn.
Those are the plans that came with the application.
Is there a restaurant? Does it drive in? Oh, that's a driving range.
Everything else is in the application.
What if, what if we were to do, could we do this and might this help? So clearly, the restaurant's an accessory use of the golf club, right? I mean, that's how it's all started.
I think so.
Could we condition it that the bowling alley, like, be very explicit in tying it to the flatbread restaurant?
Which they're doing.
But, but, but being super explicit that, so if this flatbread restaurant becomes something else, the bowling alley goes away, too, because it's, it's, and it's like a, like a, like a multi-layered.
It's connected to it.
It's only to that restaurant, is that dicey?
No, I see what you're saying, because down the road, you know, you could say, well, then that restaurant changes back to a pub, but we're going to put the door over here, and the bowling lanes have always been there, so now we have bowling here and a restaurant there, and, you know.
Because flatbread is precedent, it seems to be, they do have some restaurants that clearly explicitly have bowling, as Somerville, as you said, Salem, so flatbread is a brand, some of them do have, people know flatbread and bowling, and some locations go together, so what I'm suggesting is, could we make the original accessory and then tie this explicit to that specific, the fact that it is a flatbread?
Or condition on ownership.
Would that help?
You can't condition.
You can't do that?
No, you can't condition special permit on ownership.
Trying to be out of the box.
However, I think one thing that just came up when you two were discussing was, well, you could, you know, another person, entity comes in, and then you put a different door here, I think you can condition that. You can condition exactly what I've said in the application, which is that it's going to be constructed as shown on the, on the floor plan submitted with the application. The access to the bowling lanes will be from within the restaurant, no separate access will be provided, and it will be operated by the restaurant during the hours of operation for the restaurant. All of that is specific in the application, and that you can put very specifically in the decision.
Can you make a requirement of patronage of the bowling alleys, patronage of the restaurant?
I don't, I don't think that, like, to me, that doesn't really matter. I mean, it is what it is, people go in, they bowl, whatever, it's flatbreads, we know what's there, we know what this is going to be. Twenty years from now, what's going to be in there?
Yeah, that's.
I don't know, you got a, you got a restaurant, and they can sell this tomorrow, and they can make it anything they want with a bowling alley, and I don't, and you can, they could probably make any interior changes without, without changes to the special permit, once the use is established through this permit, they can go in and move doors around if they wanted to, just get a building permit, they can go renovate the restaurant, just get a building permit. Use isn't changing from here on out, but yet, it can kind of change, it can kind of change.
Yeah.
Well, we wouldn't put, we wouldn't be able, if you conditioned it the way the application is reading, we wouldn't be able to put doors in for separate access without coming back to you.
Well, if it's specific to these plans, the interior plans of the building now are going to be locked like this.
Yes.
Any changes to the interior of the structure would require a change of the special permit or something. But then you argue, well, no, not restaurant renovation, because we might want to renovate the restaurant.
Right.
Well, so.
But the bowling alley portion, which is in front of you, you could condition that the access to the bowling is through the restaurant, that it is, that it is one operation, it is not two. Does that work?
You say that again, I'm sorry?
That it, that the restaurant and the bowling is one operation, not two, so no separate entrance, it's operated by the same entity. You cannot condition as to what entity it is and, and who the ownership is. But you could say that the bowling alley, it's bowling lanes, this is not a big bowling alley.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, it's fine.
But that the bowling lanes are operated as part and parcel of the restaurant, it is not a separate.
And shall not be operated independently, I guess.
Yeah.
You could do that.
And then could you say any change to the nature and character of the associated restaurant?
No, I'd like to say that.
No, we're not agreeing that you can tell us what we can do in the restaurant.
Right, but so, there you go, I mean, you know.
I, I, I mean, well, you, you don't, I'm sorry, but you don't get that, you don't get that shot.
Well, you may not get your lanes.
Yeah, I mean, you know.
I mean, that's a big ask.
How many flatbreads are associated with golf courses?
I don't know, no, there's no others, yeah, there's no others, yeah.
No, no others, you know, and it's just, it's jammed in here because a restaurant's not legal in this, in this district, that's why it's here. The only reason you're here is because of this permit being a little loosey-goosey and five extra words at the end of this thing, and their accessory uses. If the board doesn't find that flatbreads is really an accessory use to the golf course, or maybe should not have been, then any accessory you want attached to flatbreads, you could easily argue, forget it. I mean, indoor amusement is not allowed in this district, that restaurant is not allowed in this district, except, except on the very thinly veiled argument that it's all accessory.
Why, why was an accessory use for indoor amusement granted to two oh six West Main Street a few years ago in the same zone for four.
Coming to us. Two oh six.
For four golf simulators in a restaurant.
That was, that was not a.
The building inspector granted that as an accessory use.
Right, and that's not in the RC district, okay? That's on West Main Street, which is the RB, I believe.
Yeah, they're coming to us, too.
And that's allowed by special, it's actually allowed use.
It was, it was just granted as a special permit, as an accessory use, there was no special permit granted.
I don't know what the zone is, I don't know the zone.
Look, I'm not, look, I'm not going to go down the road of, I'm just saying.
So let's, let's.
Let's work together on this and lock it in, because I see this whole thing as potentially migrating to something other than what was originally envisioned here. I'm not saying it's wrong, I'm not saying it's not.
I think it has started on this path already, the migration.
It has, and so here's an opportunity to let's just make sure we can, you know, put a fence around this thing.
Exactly, let's make you comfortable with the use that's before you, which is the indoor amusement accessory to the restaurant.
As proposed.
As proposed.
Without further additions in the amusement area.
I think we can.
Yep.
Yeah.
Take ten and work on it.
No, I don't, I mean, maybe they do. But, I mean, you could close a hearing, and we could work up a decision, and we can act on it, you know, the next meeting. They were going to get some information on this, on the status of the existing permit anyway.
Can you close the hearing, given that that's pending, you probably can, right? Because it's an existing, the chemical piece.
Continue it, whatever you want. I mean, you're going to look into this condition as well.
Actually, what I was going to suggest on that, you have ninety days, let me. What I was going to suggest is that we would take a condition that we would look into the water testing that's necessary, and we would report back to you what that, what that determination is. And if water testing needs to be done, fine, if there's some sort of modification that the water department is suggesting, then we would file for a modification, but we would report back to you. But I don't think we need to hold up this particular decision because it is not related, so that condition, but.
I would agree with that as a condition, we can add that.
So we wouldn't have to continue it.
I mean, it's already, it already technically is a condition, it's already a condition here.
But to be stated, it would be good.
Yeah, follow through with.
I don't know about the current conundrum, though.
Yeah, I know, I'm struggling with that, I'm thinking about it.
I don't know, sit here.
Well, all right, so if we take the special permit, I think you have draft decision that we're requesting the special permit, which would be to grant a special permit to allow the accessory use to, accessory amenity, you might even want to say, as opposed to use, just throw that out there as an excess, as, to allow the indoor amusement of four bowling lanes as an accessory amenity to the existing restaurant, constructed entirely within the existing clubhouse building, as shown on the floor plan submitted with the application, and then adding the conditions that the access to the bowling lanes will be from within the restaurant, no separate access will be provided, the lanes will be available only during hours of operation of the restaurant, and the lanes will be operated as an amenity and associated with the restaurant, not as a separate, not as a separate business. And I think you've got that in, in your draft.
Let me just ask you, you're mentioning amenity, why amenity and not accessory use?
Because I thought that you were a bit concerned about using the term accessory use, that that could somehow be turned into some, somebody could say, well, this is an accessory use, too, and that's an accessory use, too. If you said an amenity of four lanes, then you're not holding out those lanes as, as something that could be expanded.
I'm just wondering how it ties back, yeah, okay, well, the permit is for related activities, facilities, and accessory uses, so amenity is considered. An amendment to a particular use, or a particular accessory use, I guess, okay, all right. I'm not an attorney, so all these little nuances kind of.
Mr. Chair, can we just talk? Mr. Chair, can we just talk with the president? It feels.
Do you have a question for him?
No, I just wanna make sure that, do you have anything to add to this part of the discussion? Do you have thoughts?
As far as bowling, I mean, this is all beyond me. I mean, I just.
Yeah.
My family's old, my property's nineteen point six. This has all been thrown down on us, uh, chemicals, all of the runoff.
So it's really still about that? Okay. I just didn't know if you wanted to weigh in on this part of the application.
I have no feeling that.
Okay.
If you wanna put a bowl in the alley, I don't really care.
Okay, just wanted to check. Just wanted to check.
No, that's fine.
Okay.
No, I, I, I wanna see these people do, do well, you know.
Me too.
You know, you don't wanna see.
Agreed.
Them go under.
Do you have that sort of drafted out or are you, is that something you're working on now?
I, yes.
That would be.
Okay.
That'd be great. I'm not trying to be difficult.
No, I, I appreciate this. I, I, especially when you've connected the history, that really made me appreciate what the concerns were in two thousand and eleven, which I don't think I fully appreciated. But when you put it all together, I'm like, oh, I got it, okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I like, I like candlepin. Okay.
Also.
Same old plans.
Hmm, no changes. Sure.
This is the.
Reliterating.
It's, you're reading from my draft, your draft?
She's working on it.
Okay, that's, that's Nancy's, that's mine. But then I, if you, then I can always take that.
Yeah, could, we're gonna take five minutes. Could you, do you mind telling her?
Could you, do you mind telling her?
Sure.
Software, thank you.
Okay.
I mean, an, an accessory use would be permitted by right, right? I mean, if they wanted to-
I think we're essentially trying to do the inverse. If it's not explicitly stated that it's allowed, it's not allowed. That's what we're trying to get at, right?
Wouldn't that be into the purview of the building inspector, though, to make that determination?
Which is what he did here.
Which is what he did here. But it would only be if a permit was required.
But it said explicitly, no amusements.
Couldn't they make a determination that, uh, I'm trying to think of something egregious?
Feasible. Egregious, but feasible.
He could have said this was an accessory use and allowed it.
Fair enough, yeah.
Except it says explicitly in the bylaws that indoor amusements are not allowed in an RC district, nor actually as a restaurant. It's explicit.
Right, but if he had agreed that this was an accessory use to the restaurant-
To the restaurant.
Then we wouldn't be here.
Right.
That is true, that's a true statement.
That's my point, that's exactly my point.
It's a true statement.
That's the way it's supposed to work.
The, the, the part I'm concerned about that is-
We're making changes to the special-
You're trying to, you're trying to rule for him in advance.
They, they would have to come before the board every single time they even had a question about what they were doing in the future.
It's gotta be a use, I mean, that would be a, that would be a change. I mean, it's not like they want to put a little, you know, they want to, you know, allow people to sit outside and eat. That's no change in use. They wouldn't have to, you know, that, you're talking about an accessory use would have to be a new use that they want to do. And for one person to suggest that that use is, is or is not an accessory, I think it's, it's very reasonable to say, come to the board and have us make that finding, at least. You know, I mean, I-
But you're usurping the building inspector's purview.
Not necessarily.
Well, you're saying he can't rule that something's an accessory use.
I don't think he, I don't think he wants to make that decision anyway.
Well, I know he doesn't, but, I mean, but he does have the right to.
That's why it's here.
But he has, but that's his job, uh, first.
Uh, not necessarily.
To make that decision.
He would have said, he could have said, you can go to the zoning board for a finding, to find that this is an accessory use. Technically, that's all we would have to do, right?
How did you work it, Jeff?
No other indoor amusement, oh, I crossed it, or accessory uses shall be allowed.
Yeah, I, I, no more, no other indoor amusement is fine. Accessory uses that they might, that we might otherwise be allowed to have under the eighty-nine, fifteen decision shouldn't be taken away. And that's the call of the building inspector, as to what-
Or uses, or accessory uses beyond the scope of the eighty-nine decision.
Which is too, which is so broad, though.
Which I don't think you have to say, because that-
No, I get, I agree, you don't have to, you almost don't have to say it, but this is just because, to prevent a building inspector who's gonna maybe the next time, yeah, fine, go ahead, and boom, and that would be, this would be in without ever coming here.
But I think the fact that this decision will now be here.
Like I said, you can, you can argue that just about anything could be an accessory use, and with enough pressure on a building inspector, not that these guys would do that, but somebody done, you know, a busy guy who wants to see things go away.
Water slide.
Whatever, I mean, it's accessory use. He could just say that, that's not, that's not necessarily the way it's supposed to work.
But now you're going to have this decision in the record that is going to say an indoor amusement use has to come back here. That decision will now be made for the building inspector, right? Because he's going to see this, and you're going to say, no additional or other indoor amusement activities shall be permitted without coming back.
All right, yeah, that's true, I agree with that completely. Without limit it to that, and-
There does seem to be benefits.
For the record.
What can be considered an accessory use of the restaurant, which is an accessory use of the golf club. I see.
And that interpretation under the eighty-nine, fifteen decision is the building inspector's.
It's tough. I think to say any accessory use is pretty broad.
Yeah.
I think it would force the owner to, to be, be here, you know, potentially indefinitely, anytime they, because ultimately, who's to make that decision? It's the building inspector.
Well, to be quite honest, I mean, during this hearing, it's discussed what this thing was going to consist of, and they talked about a restaurant, they talked about this, and that's a good idea. And instead of saying, and with one plan, you know, per plans attached, you saw a general plan is, so to encompass everything that was discussed, you know, they put this in there. I don't think they put this in there with the intent of, twenty years from now, you can go ahead and gin up whatever other accessory use they might want to justify, to change what was discussed at this hearing as a golf course. A golf course has a bunch of stuff with it, and, you know, you go through the minutes of that hearing, and all this stuff was talked about. Again, I'm, I'm just saying, you know, you were saying, well, that's his, that's his decision to make, and that's not how that was originally intended to work.
But nobody's, to use your term, nobody's ginned up anything here. We've come in with an application for an indoor-
No, I agree, I understand.
Use, and it's been twenty, thirty, thirty years since that original decision, so I, I think it's-
I, I agree. I just, I, I, I see that the restaurant has changed substantially since it was originally envisioned, and it's, it's different. It's now a franchised chain restaurant over there, um, which has, by virtue of a few words in here, migrated legally to be that when it would never have ordinarily been allowed to be there. Okay, that's just the way it was, it's the way it's happened. I'm not gonna argue any of it, I'm just saying that's what happened. But, but for the fact that that was expanded and renovated through building, building permits that didn't have to come here, it probably wouldn't be a chain restaurant as, as it is today. Is that good, bad, and different? I don't know, but that's the way it worked. And I don't think that was the original intent of this permit, is what I'm saying. And so, whatever, we can go around and around all day, but I think this is, this is fine. I think it, it, it kind of locks things down. The plans are, are very important, that they, you know, do it per plan submitted.
Yeah.
So now, I gotta figure out how to read this in its entirety, because-
Why, do you need extra paper?
No, no, this is fine. Yeah, and start at the top where I scratched things out, where it's a grant.
So you said, you make a motion to grant, and then go from there, and don't include all of the other stuff.
And I'm gonna include everything below it, right?
Right, just the stuff that I handwritten on the side. I included everything out of the type that was handwritten. And, um, and you want to make your findings for the special permit, which were in the application. And they're probably in the decision.
It's yours.
Oh, do you?
Nope, I got it, mine's here. Just get my stuff together. Where are my findings? Did you, were you about to give them to me?
I was just gonna give you the bylaw.
Can you just remind me what the piece is about, the, I forgot what it's called, the runoff or whatever, where, where is that? The, the-
It's referenced.
Quarterly testing.
The applicant shall address condition number eight of the eighty-nine, fifteen decision.
Okay.
And shall advise the ZBA of the outcome.
Okay, so Jim, that's in here.
Excuse me?
There, we're going, as one of the conditions, we're gonna reference the original condition of the quarterly testing, okay?
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's basically gonna be a statement that references the original decision that explicitly stated the quarterly testing. Okay?
Sure.
So, but you should still talk to the building inspector.
Yes, well, I mean, consistently, you know, you give these-
Yeah, yeah.
Rules and-
Yeah, but this will, this will restate that, so I think that will address-
All right, I'll talk to the building.
Yeah.
All right, so I'm gonna do the findings first. So I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, um, that regarding the application for two fifty-eight, two fifty-eight R. Andover Street, the application for an accessory use to the existing club and restaurant, uh, that the board finds that the request is desirable to the public convenience and welfare, and an amenity for restaurant patrons and their families, will not overload any public water or other municipal systems, so as to unduly subject any area to hazards affecting health, safety, or the general welfare, will not impair the integrity or character of the district or adjoining districts, there'll be no visible changes to the exterior of the clubhouse building or the property, and will not cause an excess of that particular use which could be detrimental to the character of the neighborhood, and will provide inappropriate amenity to the restaurant dining patrons. I further move that having made those findings, the board grant a special permit under one sixty-five nine to allow indoor amusement accessory use to the restaurant consisting of four candle, candlepin bowling lanes constructed entirely within the existing clubhouse building, as shown on the floor plan submitted with the application, subject to the following condition: Number one, the bowling lane shall be available only during restaurant hours. Access to, to the lane shall be through the restaurant, no separate access shall be allowed. Lane shall be operated by the restaurant. The applicant shall address condition number eight of the eighty-nine, fifteen decision, and shall advise the ZBA of the outcome. No site plan, and no site plan changes are to be proposed or allowed. There are to be no changes to the signage, and no other indoor amusements shall be allowed. That's it. Second.
For discussion?
Do we need, it just occurred to me, the, the fact that it says no site change means no additional seating, right?
Uh, that would be the site.
That would be part of the site. No, the site is external, that was part of the site. So no additional seating is contained within that?
No.
No, do we need to state that? Because we did talk about that. Will the addition of the, there will be additional seating, okay.
Um, I think saying per plans covers that way specifically.
Okay, I'm fine then, yep. Yep, I mean, they can only fit a s- 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 explicit amount of seating anyway, but-
Are you good with that?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good carry.
Thanks, guys, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to-
Need a motion to- Oh, you know, I need to read it, I need to read the appeal period.
Oh, right.
Where do I have that? I don't have that, sorry.
You don't, I'm not gonna get a, you don't need site plan approval. I'm not gonna make that, we're not gonna make that determination. Do you have to go to site plan approval?
Some of the beginning.
Oh.
No change in part.
Uh, for mass general laws, uh, chapter forty-eight, section nine, special permits granted shall lapse within a specific period of time, not more than three years, which shall not include such time required to pursue or await the determination of an appeal referred to in section seventeen. If substantial use thereof has not sooner commenced, except for good cause, or in the case of a special permit for construction, if construction has not begun by such date except for good cause. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Well, actually, I need to, to close, I need a motion to close, um, the hearing for two fifty-eight Andover.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Seconded by one of us.
Oh, second, yeah, I got it.
Who's second?
Anybody, me, well, they won't have.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Have a motion to close, uh, the ZBA meeting for June fourth, twenty nineteen.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? No.
Okay.
Thank you.